All right, moving on then. To the elementary principal contract. This is the elementary principal and instructional coach contract. For proposed board Greg Dobitz. His desire and the proposal is that his. Health insurance compensation would remain the same still as he has now still under the teacher model. As opposed to the. The administrators who have gotten a full health insurance policy. Anticipating that he would revert to a teacher's status in the subsequent school year and. And he didn't want to have to go back to, you know, he didn't want to then have to start paying, wanted to stay the same, so. I would. Are there any questions or comments, concerns about this contract other than that which we've already discussed? I did bring up today that the. Extracurricular coaching positions had not been included in this contract which were previously in this teaching instructional. They are noted on here. His. Letter of resignation reads the same, I am writing this letter as a formal resignation from our job as personalized instructional coach for the 2223 school year. He was not resigned as football more baseball coach. But for clarity, those two items are noted in this contract. If no concerns or questions about the. Contract as proposed, then I would entertain a motion to accept. The resignation of Greg Dobitz as personalized instructional coach for 2223 anticipating the acceptance of the principal instructional. So like that way, Heimbach moves to accept the resignation of Greg Dobitz as personalized instructional coach for 2223. Is there a second? Okay, Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes, the resignation is accepted. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve the elementary principal instructional coach contract for Gregory Dobitz. Effective for the 2223 school year. In the form that it that you see it except striking the language. Related to being granted their previous position and the motion to include that we will seek legal guidance on that language in the contract. Is there a motion to accept that contract with that change?
I'm making motion.
Rosendahl moves that motion, is there a second? Second, Heimbach seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes and the contract is approved and will work on that language with the attorney tomorrow. Welcome aboard Greg, welcome to our school. Can everyone hear us now? So I guess we can't. Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes and financial reports, a approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the June 20th special, June 20th regular and June 23rd special board meeting minutes. Which I think all of these were. Nagel moves the approval of all three minutes, is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes, those three board meeting minutes are approved. Now we'll move on to the review of financial reports, which of these do we have? Are there some what we need to table? And can we do that all in a single motion?
We don't have, we don't have a reconciliation revenue, a balance sheet of revenue and expense, we haven't been able to close up June. Do we have the pledge of assets, Shannon? We're still missing the institution, we're struggling to get the pledge of assets. From the institutions, we have two but not the third. We'd like to table that on the annual transportation report, we have to pull in a lot of figures on that. So we're gonna have. I think we're gonna have Terry work on that report. UN financial report is not done. That's not due until September 15th. So we got some time on that one, but these have to kind of be done in this order. So none of those reports are here. In reality, so we just, we just haven't been able to close up June. But the transfer of monies, I believe you're talking about the building fund, correct? That's the only transfer of monies left. Field special reserve was done.
Yeah.
So the building fund and talking DPI, you can. You can end the building funding event. That is recommendation to do that, but you can do it, there's nothing in law that says you can't do it. Something laws says you can do it, it's not addressed. There are just in the prev- in prev issues that have ended in the negative in the building fund. So.
Given that we're not going to be able to approve any of the reconciliation balance sheets and so on.
Right.
We could choose to make that transfer later when we do that.
What I would recommend is not do it, but next.
Make sure we don't end it.
Well, yeah, and we could, if you want to, when you get all done, you can transfer it beginning of next year, whether you're in right now. Or wait to the end of the year and then transfer at the end of the year, because you're gonna go further in the red, I think. From what it looks like.
Yeah.
So, so I would not do the transfer now, because you don't know financially where you're at right now. So.
Okay, so then are you suggesting that we should have a motion to table all of the financial reports listed, all of the. Financial actions and approvals listed.
Part of this struggle is just gaining access to the information that we need. I mean Sony's been involved in the, in the bank thing and that's been interesting to get that and just getting access to websites and. And stuff like that and it's been challenging, so. But we're getting there one step at a time, but it's not there yet, so.
Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion to table any action on these financial reports. Is there such a motion? Nagel moves to table action on the financial reports, is there a second? Oh, sorry, Thorpe seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? My parliamentary knowledge is correct, then we would need to move to take them from the table. Take those from the table before we add them and I can. All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes and the financial report actions are tabled. This is the end of our agenda of this first meeting, I will declare this meeting adjourned at 6:30 PM. So does Ryan have to come back? Oh, I should have said, thank you, Ryan, all you are still in session, but thank you, Ryan.
Did he get his knee played? All right. Oh, didn't he?
No.
You don't need it on your desk.
Oh, it's much better than this one, okay. All right, thank you.
Do you want to break or you just want to press forward? And then the Zoom meeting just continuing, yeah, I don't edit on the scene. Thank you. All right, the next meeting is on you to start, Mr. Sell.
Good thing we have got you under contract. Okay, so I will call this first board meeting, regular score, a school board meeting of the 2022, 2023 school year to order at 6:32. Okay, so we have, am I the one that does the open?
Yeah.
I do, okay, so we have one elected board member who must take an oath and the incumbent school board members may wish to review the oath. And I kind of gave you the background of where it's referenced to, so.
I think we can all do it, we can all refresh in here, let's do it. Are we, are you gonna say the words?
Oh, okay, kind of like merits of money or something. All right, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the school board of Oaks Public School District number 41.
Of the office of member of the school board of Oaks Public School District number 41.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome board member A. Okay, so the next section of our board, board meeting is reorganization of the board. And so the first thing I do will, I'll call for nominations for the 2223 presidents. Of the school board, of the old school board, so are there any nominations for the president?
I would nominate Ronnie New.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll say.
We have a first and a second discussion? Does that have to be a roll call board or can it just be?
Up to you.
All right, let's take a roll call board.
Meal.
Yes.
Day. Thorpe.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
I'm Mark.
And I will hand the election of the vice president over to president on email.
Thank you, good job, thank you for your confidence. I'm humbled. I will call for nominations for vice president of the board. Any nominations? Monica Heimbach has been nominated, is there a second? You can jump right in. Don't be shy. Okay, we got that, a day seconds, is there any discussion? I guess I, I don't need to ask for other nominations, it's just a motion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Meal.
Yes.
Day. Yes. Thorpe. Yes. Nagel. Yes. Heimbach. Heimbach has been elected vice president of the board. All right, so you have the agenda in front of you, I hope, right, everybody has it on paper electronically or. It's how we like the agenda, I think we put it out once or maybe we just looked at it and with some consultation of some of her contacts, Mrs. Sell has. Added some things that she felt were necessary. I am not aware of any additions or changes we thought we needed to make to this agenda.
I have one.
Okay.
Under. Five Q designates Starion Bank, Bank North and First Community Credit Union as depositories. We also need a request of all three banks that it specifically states that. Anna, Sonia and Shannon. Have signing.
Okay, so banking authorization.
Yeah.
To the business manager or by name.
By name.
Okay.
By name.
Okay, so we'll add two items, you designate Starion Bank North and First Community Credit Union as depositories. And authorize Jefferson, Sell and Meal as signers. Do they need the signature?
If.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Just make sure.
Yes, yeah. There is also one, if the Starion has two accounts in previous. The, all three signers were usually on the checking account, there is the ICS clearing account that they are a want. That currently I am the only person on there, so you guys want to know how much money was in that clearing account? Which was, would have been kind of handy, because it was just April when I started and. I had to wait until I got clearance in several days, so I think having more than one person.
So it's better.
So. So NX, so then not only the signing abilities, signature abilities of those three, they want Anna and Sonia to be. Signature on ICS account.
Okay, so on all accounts.
All accounts.
All that. Okay, so we can discuss it more when we get there, but we'll make sure we include the signing officer. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Under the E's, under drivers education, have a discussion on instructor. I mean, that's not really the, is that the appropriate place to have? Are you, speaking of want, want to take action on it? Why don't we put another staff instead of that probably? Okay, I have two understaffing will be drivers and instructors. All right, anything else? Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the additions that have been discussed? Heimbach moves to approve the agenda, is there a second?
I'll say.
Thorpe seconds, is there any discussion? Any further question, your discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes and the agenda is approved. All right, Anna has put some good notes in for us. On the advisory, she has minutes. I'm just wondering if we can take maybe items A through F. In a single motion?
Yeah. Yep, you can, you can come up however you want.
So Anna recommends to appoint Anna Sell as federal program representative, Jamie Franks as section 504. Ed Wentworth as ADA coordinator. Anna Sell as title nine coordinator, civil rights coordinator and Shannon as always special ed representative. Are, are those outlined in policy? I mean, does policy say the superintendent or?
No.
There doesn't need.
It doesn't, well, some of them do, some of the policies say that, it's just that for most of these, the superintendent ends up sitting as the. The person that is the bottom line.
All right, so those are Mrs. Sell's recommendations to us and how is that how it has been, we've been operating with the superintendent in those positions that you have noted? Yourself and the counselors and the other physicians?
Not necessarily, because like as the elementary principal, I've been the federal program representative, but at least in Allen Dolly I was, but here in Oaks, I, Craig was the federal program investigator. And you know, in some of these, you were not designated, people in the past, but Tyler Hanson was my, kind of my guide, he's like, you really need to have these things in minutes in order to have them, you know, just in case if something would. Come our way, which hopefully wouldn't, you know, but to have these things in the minutes so that they are designated and I think we've kind of been able to slide a lot by with that, I was like that, well, let's just get ourselves in line.
All right, so I'll, I'd entertain a motion and if anybody wants to break it up for any further discussion, please speak up, but. I'd entertain a motion to accept Mrs. Sell's recommendations for the appointments in items A through F. Nagel moves to approve Mrs. Sell's recommendations for appointments to items A through F, is there a second? Day seconds, is there any discussion? Just refresh my memory, put a line.
That is, well, it used to be, you know, females in sports, but it's more like there's sexual harassment, there's sexual, you know, some, yeah.
Any further questions or discussion?
There's actually four of us on that team, sorry. There's actually four of us that are all on it, my grade will be one member, so you've got different roles, also, my role is just the coordinator. And that can be anybody else, it's just that that's been.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes. All right, now let's look at. G through N. Currently, the board member on the Southeast Region Career Tech Center Board is Sheila. Dicky County JDA is me. Technology Committee is Sheila. Negotiation is Sheila and Monica.
Was, was that whole last year, was it?
No, I was on, I was on the one. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, sure, that was our. I don't think that was updated last year, so I was going on the most current that we had for our. But now this will be updated, we'll get it all updated and it'll be, so.
Okay, so and Monica, you were on wellness. And hardly, I didn't, I don't think, but neither of my committees. And, and some of the, like the wellness, I know is required by policy to me, other committees don't need to meet, they need, has needed and requested by the leadership. Facilities has been Robert and Ryan, so we'll need a. Leadership and PD has been me, curriculum was me and Robert. So let's, let's talk about. We know that, first of all, Sheila, are you okay with remaining on SRC TC? Does anybody want to fight her for it?
Yeah.
It's, it's a nice, I, I was on it, I just enjoy it, it is very interesting, you know, you're done in an hour. I'm willing to stay on Dicky County JDA, but if somebody else would like it, I give it up. Technology Committee. Negotiations. I would be willing to, to go back to it for one more time. We have Monica on the wellness, I would thought that would be a nice, you, you would be a good one. Who wants to be on facilities? Not gonna be me, probably. Okay, I'm not, I'm not saying Rhonda has to be on wellness, I certainly can't, or would you like to be on facilities, would you like to be on, you know, it's fine. Who would rather be on facility, that's a, that's a pretty active committee. Let's put Monica. So who's gonna be on? Is it one or two? Well, it's gonna be a motion. We'll put Robert, Robert and Monica on facilities, Rhonda on wellness. So Sheila's got three. Rhonda's only got one. Robert's only got one. Technology.
Yeah, I saw that one, that one time, so. Oh, I'm on that, I'm sold.
Oh, yeah, we're on curriculum, I didn't get that part. Would somebody like to take? Curriculum? From me? I like. Okay, that's good. Okay, so here's what I've got, and please, if this isn't acceptable or you'd rather something else, please speak up. Southeast Region Career Tech Center, Sheila Nagel. Dicky County JDA, Sonia Meal. Technology Committee, Sheila. Negotiations, Sheila and Sonia. Wellness, Rhonda. Facility is Robert and Monica. Leadership, professional development, Sonia. And curriculum, Monica and Robert. Is there a motion to approve those appointments to committees? Heimbach moves the appointment of committee members, is there a second? Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, let's take O and P together. Is there a motion to authorize Oaks Public School District to join the North Dakota High School Activities Association and also to designate Oaks Times as the official newspaper of the district?
I'll make the motion.
Thorpe moves those two approvals, is there a second? Day seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, I'll take one motion to designate Starion Bank North and First Community Credit Union as depositories for district funds. And to add superintendent Anna Sell, business manager Shannon Jepson and school board president Meal as signers on all accounts. At those three financial institutions. Is there a motion? Nagel moves. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds, is there any discussion? Questions for discussion? Questions or discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Our next item is to set the regular board meeting date, place and time. 7 AM on the second Tuesday has been working for me. Works well for me. How's that work for you, Rhonda?
Uh, short of being gone for work. It should be okay.
Is that a frequent occurrence?
No, not too often. Usually it's like Tuesday to Thursday, but it, it sometimes it's the second week, sometimes it's the third, so.
Alright, is there a motion then to set our regular monthly board meeting date, place and time as the second Tuesday of each month? At seven AM at the Oak's Public Schools Conference. Thor moves that motion, is there a second? Day seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes. Alright, moving on to the action items on the agenda. The second reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three student handbooks. I made a comment today, uh, it was brought to my attention last, bringing the bullying form is not. Contained in the handbooks. Now that a link has been placed in, in the handbook, but it's a really, really, really complicated link, and if I tried to type that in. It, it would be difficult, and when I went to the website to look for the form, the only way I could find it. Was by typing bullying forms into the search box, which the search box I thought was kind of hard to find. But I suggest that the forms just be printed in the handbook, it's in both handbooks. And. It'd be. So, so if you can find the handbook on the website, you can find the form, it can still be where it is on the. On, on the website. Well, and it, I went to, when I was looking for it, I went to the families section and forms in. When it performs in San Diego is under, and it wasn't there, it's over under district information, and that's not right, right? But it could be whole. I don't, other than that, is, um, is there any concern about the second reading of the handbooks? So, under if a storm develops during the night, we are striking out from the three buses cannot run at all, school will not start. Why are we striking? That's how I grew up in school, so I get the. Also, you got these. I don't know, maybe then you're opening it up and let all these kids drive to school. What are your thoughts, Mrs. Self?
Okay, how this came to be, I, I don't know, did Brandon do it in the high school, I didn't. Yeah, so that was with the suggestion, um, because we threw these up, you know, when Mr. Jepson. That was under his suggestion because his hands were really tied that day, you know, he ran the, that day, he didn't run the buses, right, or, and then we had school and. Mr. Dog's, we've had quite a few of the kids here, but, you know, his hands, he was, this was brought to his attention multiple times by people. I don't, I don't know, you know, I haven't been in that situation where we can't run school, but there was like multiple days that we didn't get to run school, but because. He would have followed, you know, and this isn't the policy, this is just in our handbooks, that not running buses is not a policy. Then policy would supersede our handbooks, you know, so it came down. I, you know, I haven't had to call school because of that, but.
But it's not policy, so if it's in the handbook, then it sort of becomes policy known to the public. Yeah, so, so if the handbook is silent on it, that doesn't mean we're going to not run buses, but school is still on.
You know, because I think if we had a year where there was like a lot of bad weather, couldn't have school for multiple days in a row, but we had kids that were stuck out in the country, you know, that we could say we could still have school and then. They can get the kids when they were able to get them to us, because I mean, how many times have we been stuck in our yards where, you know, out in the country where.
Well, we do still ask kids to have storm homes, right? So if our handbook says that we aren't going to run buses, but we've already said the day before, you're at your storm holes. Then we should be running school, right? That's why we, we have storms. We have really not used storm homes much.
And I, we haven't used storm homes since I've been here, I don't think. Well, and most of the time, people will come and get their children anyway, if they don't want them in town. Okay, I think if it's not in, like Greg said, if it's not in the handbook, then it's, you know, it, we still can make that choice, not like, well, it was in the handbook, it said that, you know, so. Which I understand, we just wanted it that way, it's been a little bit far. Give me some more.
That's fine. Okay, uh, is there a motion to approve the. The second, the student handbook says a second reading. Other than, I, I, I will. I will just suggest that you add the, the bullying form in the handbooks. Unless you think that would just encourage more non-warranted bullying.
I did visit with Brandon, and he has what, he likes to have that communication up, coming to the principal to say, hey, I want to fill out this bully report form versus, you know. He would like to have a conversation first before that, but I did talk to, um, Marine. We'll make it more accessible, I think we can make it a lot easier link for people to buy.
Even if, even if this just said in the, I think it's under the district information tab. Yeah, so it, it's very clear. Well, I like that it's actually in here, so that people are aware of that forms there. Okay, any further discussion?
Um, mine is just on the attendance, so. I was looking at this closer now, is it, it's switched to ten percent instead of an actual ten days?
That in the high school one? Right, so that's chronic absenteeism, that it's defined by the state is ten percent of the days.
Yeah, and what's the high school, is that still?
I believe that, that may. So he pulled out the century code, and that's the same as last year, that it's, um. Century code actually says that three days of unexcused, or six half days of unexcused, or twenty-one class periods of unexcused. It's even, I don't know if he even defines. Here we go, and absences. Eleven absences. So it is still the same that. Is that ten days, not ten percent?
My question to you, Mrs. Self, would be, um, I've actually, since we implemented this policy. I started running into it with my daughter, that does very, very well in school. But since she does travel a lot for events that aren't considered North Dakota High School Activities Association, that she was. Bumping up against this policy. I just want to make sure where we're at, um, at first. Brandon was saying that. She can't go, um, he had since modified itself, I just want to make sure where we're at before this gets squared up with you.
Oh, I think I would.
But then it also says. The principal has discretion to determine if they're excused or unexcused.
And I would support that, that Brandon would have discretion as a high school principal, because that would be. A really hard call for me to make, not knowing, you know, like. The classes are, you know, what the requirements are, how the child is doing in the class, or not doing in the class. I think that's more for credit, right, the credit loss piece of it.
Yeah, so I mean, it could be a big deal. You don't get credit even if you have a class, that's. Like to discuss a little bit here now, just to see where everybody's at. It got put in, we recall, because there was a lot of kids just constantly missing. And their, his hands were tied. And I thought it was good for that, but then when I ran into it. We have students doing well. Communicating with their teachers, getting the word ahead of time, keeping.
The, the item, or the bullet point that says special circumstances approved by the principal, is that what you're referring to? So is that sufficient for you, for your concerns?
As long as, um, I would, I just wanted to make it aware now to put it out there a little bit when we're discussing it, because. The first time, it wasn't acceptable to the principal, later on, it did become okay. And just like anything else, and rather talk about it now than in that situation.
So are you okay voting on this today or not?
I wish she was here then. Because I would say, I would support Brandon, what Brandon has in here, and I believe that what he has in the handbook would. To believe in what he has on here, you know, that the ten days are the eleventh day, and that the special circumstances approved by the principal, so I would back him on what.
And we're gonna, we're gonna meet again before school starts, right?
We'll have our, we'll have our. Flipstream. So. What? How would you expect that it would change?
I guess my question would be, if. The circumstances are not considered special by the principal. Then. What is the student's recourse? Is it superintendent and then school board after that, or is it final, is that one hundred percent right there?
I think if there's, um, if you have a complaint against, you know, our decision that one of the teachers makes, you know, then you follow the change man, then you go to the principal, and if you don't agree with the principal, then it would go to the superintendent, and then it would go to the school board, but I think that that would be. You know, if you didn't agree with what Brandon, then it would come to me, and if you didn't agree with me, then it would come to the members of the board.
Yeah, I think that, that's, that's the tip of the process that should be followed by anything like this, that. Because there may, there may be other places in the handbook that says. Principals discretion, or teachers discretion, and staff discretion, and that would be the standard. Uh, change manual procedure to follow in any of that.
Yes.
Would you feel better if it said that explicitly in that section?
Yes.
So, would you feel comfortable that if we were to add that? Or would you rather? So should we delay action of both of these, or would you want to add them on the entry? What, uh, is there a motion related to the student? Okay, Nabel moves to approve the elementary student handbook. As a second reading, is there a second? Heimbug seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes, and then we will table. I think, um, I don't think we have to have a second reading today, we can choose to finish that next time. So without tabling it, we'll just place it on the agenda.
So I, I'll speak with Brandon and.
But no other concerns that needs to be brought to Brandon about the high school? Alright, uh, moving on then for the first reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three employee handbook. And most, oh. We don't have the personal handbook.
I did, I, I got that, um, we worked on that, that was one of our. Yeah, I had to send it yesterday.
Oh, I do, I put it in my folder.
Okay, so we found the employee handbook and, um, in some of our files, and it. Basically is just references to all of the policies that are under each of the areas. So what I did was I went through and I just made sure all the links were current, and if they weren't, I updated the links, and, um, there were some duplications. And at first I took them off, but then I thought, nah, I'm gonna leave those in there because, um. They were under different sections, so if somebody was a certified staff, they could pull up certified staff.
Okay, so the only changes that you made were correcting.
That one, that, yeah. Because they go right to our webpage, so it's not like I had to find some update, you know, updated, yeah.
Yeah, so truly, there's little or no contents, very little content in the handbook itself, it's simply. And we haven't added any policies that weren't referenced here that.
Okay, that I, that I didn't, um, I did not go through to see if there were any added policies.
Should be added maybe, there.
Yeah, well, this is a first reading, right?
Right, yeah.
So with, uh, we have seen the, uh, the proposed employee personnel handbook. Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve this as a first reading. Heimbug moves to approve a first reading of the employee personnel handbook, is there a second? Nabel second, is there any discussion? Which I guess the discussion was that maybe there need to be some more links placed in the handbook, just to confirm. Yeah, that meant some of the policies do say that they are, they are to be printed in the handbook, which. If they're linked there, I don't know why. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three activity handbook.
So Brandon went through and highlighted the changes with his first reading of.
She's not here, but you know, on the school attendance, it's highlighted, it's well changed.
It's, it's, it's okay, we'll get there next.
I, I'm guessing by how all is underlying, that probably that if the kids are gone for part of the day. They were coming to practice and, but they have to get approval by the administration for the absence, so, um. I think a doctor's appointment or chiropractor appointment or something like that would allow them to still go to practice. On that day, they just have to get approval from the administration, does that sound right, Mr. O'Witts?
Yeah, I think that kind of, there was some, you know, just.
Change in leadership and stuff like that, there was some instances last year, and you know, just lack of communication between. You know, students, office personnel, coaches, administration, this student was gone for whatever reason. Or one, two, three, whatever hour, how many hours today, but then still practice, so just making sure that. That everybody knows that. The communication happens.
It seems like last year. It was recommended that we move the, the benchmark day of the week from Monday to Wednesday. Yeah, and did we do that, and I see now it's Monday, the, the, the grade check page. We talked about that, like, I don't remember if it was.
I think it is the same way, so they, they checked the eligibility on Monday, but they're not ineligible until that Wednesday.
And it's written in there, it just says, in the highlighted portion, it says not in session. If the school is not in session on Monday, that opens up the next day. But then if you read on the next sentence, it kind of follows or talks about that. They're actually ineligible for competition from Wednesday to Wednesday.
Yep.
But that the check happens on Monday. And, and, you know, as a coach, that, that is very helpful, it was a good needed change.
How about the, I mean, do you, do we want this, the all of administration has to be approved if somebody's gone for an hour, that they can't practice that night?
I know it was the policy. Um, you know, as far as like, uh, just from my experience as a football coach. When I was in elementary, I had no idea who was where, I just went to practice if they were there, I assumed they were school all day. So if they were skipping a class or not where they were supposed to be or whatever, I would have no way of knowing that unless I got some sort of communication. So. I think. I think the policy is important so that we're not having our kids skipping classes and then still coming to. Practice.
But if an athlete has, has a scheduled appointment and they know that, that they're, the parent notifies. The, the central office. They'll be in school, they are going to the dentist at this time, and they'll be in school at this time, or the clinic. Um, that's not an issue because the administration has been notified. That was my experience.
Okay, it looks like the only difference is the word all is capitalized, and maybe it was just for a point of emphasis because. It was the same policy, it just always not exercise, so, are the same wording, so.
So. So if a student was gone for a class during a class, but, but were. Duly reported to administration, they are still able to practice and play. If they were absent for such a, an appointment, but they, they did not notify. The office, then they are not allowed.
Or if they've been ill, they can't practice that day, so even if they say, I'm not feeling good in the first hour of the day, they can't practice that afternoon. So I have a feeling that might have been part of it too.
Okay, and again, this is just a first reading, so if there are questions that we need clarifying, can we do so? I just, uh, I would mention that, um. That transportation form, I just really encourage that that be used. Not like, uh, one, once a year, fill it out and that's permission for the whole year. I suggest that that should be used diligently at every event. I do recall a time when two players were left, two junior high basketball players were left over in Foreman. But they. The coaches just assumed that they went home with their parents, and they didn't use, they must have not used the form. This, the students were the funds of the school board member and staff members. Not one of them. Was it not? Okay, um, so I would entertain a motion to approve the activity handbook as a first reading. Oh, yeah, it's just a first reading, and we have yet to add on activity fees, so those will be updated as we change. Okay, is there a motion to approve the first reading of the activity handbook? Um, Nagel moves to approve the first reading of the activity handbook, is there a second? Handbook seconds, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Um, preliminary budget review. We do have a preliminary budget.
Just in the.
It's not even. No, it's not in the wood packet, correct?
No, I said, no.
Okay.
Okay, so. What would you like to highlight about the preliminary budgets?
Um. Changes that were made, um, we updated title one, the title programs to what the funds are. Um, as far as Mr. Dobitz's salary goes, we did. Um, fifty-five thousand of it in. Fifty-five thousand in principal and twenty-five thousand in no, twenty-five thousand instructional code. Um, so with the instructional coach piece isn't going away. Um. What else was there?
If you do it like that, then are you limited on reimbursement?
From who? Twenty thousand from Lindsay, I mean? Yeah. He's been from Lindsay, didn't happen this past year. Didn't happen this year, and they're, they're out of money. And if there's money next year, yes, we will. And they, they didn't say there's not going to be any money, but they didn't make it, I mean, there's going to be money available. For reimbursement from Lindsay, so, but if there is, we certainly apply for it. Which should happen. Um, increase in special ed tuition, is that coming up later on in the meeting or not?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay, that, that's a sizable increase. Um. And the, uh, the VOTAC has somewhat of an increase as well in, in the assessment, so. Not as much, I guess it's not as much. Actually, the VOTAC doesn't have much of an increase.
Um, is it fair to say that the budget that was in our board packet in the month of June was not?
That, that was incorrect.
Wasn't.
That was, that was, yeah. I was pulling the wrong file, any false files.
So this is, this is the budget that you should be looking at.
Correct.
Uh, to prepare for the deeper dive we will take under the budget that I retreat.
Correct.
So I just came across the, we were just speaking of a Lindsay reimbursement on page.
What page, the, which, I think.
Okay, I have it on page eighteen of the P D L file.
What's it?
The title is, uh, improvement of instruction discovered. So I, I think everybody.
Yes.
It came just today.
Okay.
I think yesterday we ended up.
Yeah. That confined item. So what is it, what, what is your question on it?
So I'm seeing that it still has the fifty thousand dollar.
Yep.
Reimbursement.
What, put the budgeted, right?
Also for the expense. But not for twenty-two, twenty-three, but in the col, okay, so the budget column. That's highlighted in blue for twenty-one, twenty-two shows the fifty thousand dollar. Negative, so reimbursement, and then the expense column, which I take to mean the actual, which will eventually be.
Yeah.
Uh, also has that in there, and we did not receive that. So I'm guessing then that's at least a fifty thousand dollar adjustment to the ending of that. And there may be, uh, if, we don't know the ending fund base, but that is.
That will affect it if that didn't come in. Um. As far as we know, I. I don't know where it would be. Unless it was put. See, the only issue is that there's negative expenditures, which makes it very difficult to follow.
Yeah, but the email that you got had stated that we did not.
Yes, and it came, no, it came from, um.
So I'm assuming we did.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that was entered in anticipation or.
We were told last September that we were giving it, so I think.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what happened here. And I haven't gone back and, um, and searched for that entry to see.
So they reimbursed us, Lindsay reimbursed us for, um, when we bought, oh, it's adjuvability or what's.
Oh, yeah, in June here.
Yeah, they, twenty-three thousand seven fifty, they reimbursed us for the visit out there for thirteen thousand, and then the Northern Cass Institute for one thousand. So they gave us a total of thirty-eight thousand dollars.
But that's not part of that fifty.
No, I wouldn't know.
Totally separate. This is, that was, that's actually reimbursement for expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think probably what happened is. It didn't get applied for. Because they would tell you what, like Barry had said, we were going to get that, but then it had to be applied for at the end of the year, and I'm betting that that's where it's going to happen.
Okay, but what I'm also seeing on this form of the budget is the, the budget column and the expense column. Are almost exactly the same. At least on the ones I'm looking at.
No.
So, so a lot of the.
Yes.
The personnel expenses are going to be.
Right, they're gonna be pretty much.
When we get supplies and.
Yep.
Um.
Yep.
That kind of.
And we didn't, we didn't do anything with it because we haven't finalized.
Okay, so we do have our retreat scheduled for August the third.
Yep.
Which is. That's only a week away, so we're going to be ready for this. And then we have to be able to approve the budget on Tuesday the night.
Right, yeah, well, because we have to do the.
Have to. Yeah. But then we can adjust the budget either up or down even after, up until October tenth.
Fifteen, I think.
Okay, so we are really here to take, we aren't taking any action on the preliminary.
Just review of it.
So you understand what we saw in June was.
Totally, you got it away.
This is the correct budget to work from and is for. Just leave our staff alone so they can.
We get.
Get there. Okay. Um. I, I guess my thought is. Even looking at this budget. Get back up to the cloud. So. What is page, okay, the, the, what is page four in the packet? And now it looks like it's four. That might not have was putting three colors on it, here's that one. Okay, so a key, a key driver is whether that ending on, ending general fund balance. Um, that's what's left over at the end of the year, and period ends the next year. So in the past five years, it's been one point two million, one point one six five million, one point one six three million. Nine hundred forty-seven thousand. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we budgeted that it would be one million thirty-four thousand six eighty-nine. According to this estimate. Which we know is, you know, needs to be updated with the actual expenses for the year, it's nine hundred seventy-three, so. Quite a bit less than what we had expected, which is understandable because we have extensive sewer repair work that had not been budgeted for. Uh, a lot of that, all of that probably came out of the building fund, which is a negative, which we referred to earlier. But getting back up to the general fund with the projected budget for next year, this is showing another decline in funding funds to seven hundred fourteen thousand. Knowing that these numbers are not accurate right now, but thinking that, yes, that's the trend, our ending fund balance continues to decline because we're spending. And, um. Concern would be either we're going to need to, we need to consider increasing revenue. And or cutting expenses. So. We're both, of course, so. Um, I think we need to look at this budget or. Oh.
We didn't have it, so I sent it yesterday. Yeah, I know, that's the thing.
Well, it'd be nice if you, Kate Rob goes to my phone, but that's what you're. Oh, it does not rob work at the R T.
So one of the things I, I think we should be looking, we, we need to be looking at everything. We should, should be, um. I think looking at activities because we're looking at our activities, fun. And our transfers from the general fund in the past. The years that are represented was two hundred sixty thousand, two hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, budgeted this year for two hundred sixty-six thousand, projected was two hundred ninety-four thousand. Next year projected is three hundred twenty-eight thousand. Um, I think there's going to have to be some good hard working done. Revenue, yeah, I'm not sure, I think that, that's going to.
Need a combination of, um, just the revenues are down. And just to be, and so, yeah. I mean, everything's got up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at that one for sure.
So both expenditures and methodisms on that and everywhere.
I do think the food service transfer is. Going to be off for this coming year because we, we have, we're going to end the money in the account. And I think there's fifty-four thousand is, that's going to be the loss for the year. But I think we're carrying, what we're carrying about for return is going to be fifty-four. So there's some things we need to.
Hopefully be ready to take it.
Yeah, going into it.
Did you get the budget hour?
No, but my, my email.
All right, um. So no action required here on this item, G, the budget review, but just know that they've worked to be done, hopefully we'll have that to better remember the week time. Yes, let's take a five minute reason.
Entering that one water bar is on.
We're back in session. Next item on the agenda is to review and set fees for twenty-two, twenty-three. Including activity, admission, season passes, participation fees, substitute teacher pay, driver's education and computer insurance. Mrs. Song has provided. Mrs. Song has provided us with some background information and comparisons with other school districts. Okay. Let's start with item A, activity, single game admission. I see some, some districts increase the value or increase the ticket prices for double header. Towards two, yeah, two and three, you know. Occasionally, we have a wrestling match and a basketball game at the same time, and it gets. Kind of rare, I mean, they'd be going on at the same time and people would really have much of an opportunity to see.
Don't you have boys and girls sometimes?
Yeah, yeah.
On Saturday, I guess.
Well, given that most of, many of our home fans would have a season pass. It's probably. Hate though. Yeah, it does. So let's take these one at a time, maybe we wanna. Maybe we want to talk about activity admissions, season passing, participation fees together. And then act on it while, or, or altogether, whatever you want, so. I'm seeing that we're pretty well right in line with. Other districts, some districts don't charge for junior high, we started doing so a year, well, we tried to a couple of years ago, and then we. Couldn't get anybody to take tickets, but I think we've been getting it done.
Yeah.
Yes. Season passes. We're in the middle. Looks like. You. Oh, and participation fees, I think something that the group of us talked about when we reviewed the budget together was. Really, even if, if every, every one of our five hundred students participated in something. Which they don't, even, let's say even half, because of all the high school, junior high through twelfth grade. And we raised activities fees by ten dollars, that'd be twenty-five hundred dollars, so it's. Not a real revenue generating point. And I see we're on the high end of, of the neighboring districts, actually, how do they get mine without?
Robin and I were digging through, you know, trying to, and Morgan said, no, we don't charge, we want everybody to play, or something, it was, you know.
Okay, so I don't, I don't, it doesn't appear to me that we're out of line, either too high or too low on any of those, so. Well, where do you, what do you want to do with them? But you did say in your narrative that Robin mentioned possibly a.
Student. Season pass.
Season pass. So students, students are now four dollars. So if you made it a. Twenty-five dollar pass. They will attend. They come out of all even by attending six even. All right. Somebody make a motion.
It's the participation fees in the spring, yeah, like if you got. Third. Activity is the third one still waived, yes. How many kids do you have home for go, I mean, that is a lot. Baseball.
Do we charge activity fees for music? I thought we did.
Don't think so, no, because that's a class, right?
Yeah, but for, yeah. That we.
Yeah, drum and speech, yeah, yeah.
Don't believe.
I don't think so, because I think it's part of their class.
Or was that a separate thing for drum line when we were?
That might have been with drum line, I looked it up.
Well, I, myself, looking at this, I think if, if Robin thinks we should add a. An option for a student season pass at, say, twenty-five or thirty dollars, I'd be just fine with leaving them the same. And she had a recommendation of a price.
She didn't, she just told me that other schools have it, she said it might be kind of a nice thing, then the parents would have to send their, you know, that they can just come in and say, I got passed for this, you know, because sometimes. They don't have a pass, or they're not in sports, you know. Get smart people at the activities.
All right, I'll make a motion to read the activity admissions, petition creation fees, the same. Season passes the same except for add a student one or.
Nagel moves to leave activity, admissions, season passes and participation fees the same. And add a season pass for students at thirty-five dollars for the year. Is there a second? Heimbuck seconds. Is there any discussion?
I, you know.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes, and that checks off items one, two and three. Substitute teacher pay. Question I had, and I'm hoping Sheila knows this, what is S R C T C doing, but you haven't met yet, have you? No, they need smile. But. I thought it was more pretty, I thought. I thought they had increased the train. What do you recommend, Mrs. Song?
I, my recommendation would be a hundred and forty a day plus free lunch, like I said, you know, that free lunch seems kind of silly, but it's like this perk, like a thank you, like, because if Donna. Or anybody, you know, comes and stuffs for us, and I have had many of the subsidy, it's just like a, hey, thanks for doing this for us. So Robin said, you know, if you don't have time to make your lunch, you get called at eight fifteen and you're coming in, at least you know you get lunch, so.
I like the idea of going with a hundred and forty, seven thousand or.
Yeah.
And if, let's face it, the free lunch doesn't cost us much.
No. And I just think like goodwill, he takes a lot, I think, as well, so.
Okay, is there a motion regarding substitute teacher pay? We can continue to discuss.
I'll make a motion, or a hundred and forty plus lunch.
Okay, Thorpe moves to set substitute teacher pay at one hundred forty dollars a day plus lunch provided. Is there a second? Day second, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes. Driver's education fees. It is reimbursed by the state, right?
It is considered summer school.
At what price? Whatever we charge.
We, we make money and.
That's good.
We call her every five years. Right, yeah, because it has to be a certain, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you're in depreciation in the car. And they're not making much.
Now, Mrs. Kelly said that. That out of district thing has kind of gone up and down, right, like when Mr. Steinach was, when Dr. Steinach was here, it was like nobody from outside of the district. Come, because like next year, I think Mrs. Kelly said she's got fifty-four. And for her to do that, but then, but I, but she said, I think Mr. Getz said, yeah, but it's okay for out of district. And I think Josh was one that said, let's do out of district if people want to come, but I know she does have concerns with that fifty-four and, you know, having enough time and.
And didn't we talk about how so? We didn't do it last year, but didn't we discuss costly charging more for? I think we did put that in there, that it was.
I thought we had decided for repeats as well.
She don't get any reimbursement of BP.
I see, yeah, that's why we discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have, well, did I? Memory said there was two from out of district this year, right?
Yeah, two from out of district. I don't know what it costs up in the bigger schools, I would bet it's probably more, so.
But, I mean, if we don't have enough room, they don't, we don't have to take the other.
Oh, no, we don't have to, it's, I believe, though, that she said, Dr. Steinach just said, no, we won't take anybody from out, it's too hard for us to do our ones that, but. You know, we charge them for to come in.
So here, while we have kids before, we can certainly pay them. Okay, is there a motion regarding? Driver's education fees. I'll make a motion to move them the same. Do you want to add the four hundred for repeats? But it's not, it's not in front of us.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't.
Nope, that's a clarify. Okay, so the motion, I believe, is Heimbuck moves to set driver's education fees. For the coming school year at one hundred fifty dollars for in district, four hundred dollars for out of district. For repeating students with out of district contingent upon having space. That's what. Is there a second? Day seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Computer insurance, we have pretty good data. From Mr. Engel. So what are, what is your recommendation?
I think it, raising the iPads to twenty-five dollars. Like K through three, we don't charge them, but they have the most damage. And nobody takes them home anymore, so that, I think that significantly cut down on our damage down in the elementary.
They don't take them home because they choose not to, or we ask them?
We just had so much damage that we were.
That was more uncool.
Yeah, there really wasn't the need for them to take them home.
I did have somebody ask me about that, because do we expect homework to be completed, stuff that has to be done on the iPad?
Well, no, most of the time they don't. We don't send very much homework home down there, but let's say that a child did get, was at home for COVID or something, we have sent those home, like, let's say, last week, I made a schedule for five days, we did send those home, but otherwise. We did make sure that they didn't have to be homework on their iPads.
Most of the homework, I was telling her that they had homework to do at, you want it home, it was on.
They give very little homework down there for that reason, maybe that they don't have to.
Okay, so I'm reading Mr. Engel's quote, he says, I would leave laptops at fifty dollars. iPads could be raised to twenty-five from the twenty, correct, twenty? We paid out. Oh, okay, so with laptops, if you paid fifty dollars, oh, okay, he's suggesting if, if we pay, if we charge fifty dollars.
Which that is what it is already.
Okay, so we charged fifty dollars and then we had to send in and get it costly repaired and sort of like giving the deductible, you're, you're gonna pay for it.
Yeah. So he was suggesting maybe like a tiered system, that if Shannon had dropped hers last year, she's gonna pay a little bit more this year. I don't know.
Oh, I see, so. He's saying that we paid out seventeen thousand in iPad repairs, but only brought in eleven thousand insurance, but seven thousand of that seventeen thousand expense was from the previous year.
And this year, there is not as much damage, Eric, it's only got a couple that need to be fixed, so.
Hey, is there a motion regarding the computer insurance?
I'll make a motion to charge twenty-five dollars, three through six and fifty dollars, seven.
Thorpe moves to charge, charge twenty-five dollars for the iPads for grades three through six, fifty dollars for the long-term grades seven through five. We have that already?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and so retaining the max of one hundred dollars per family for all devices, all grades? I mean, so.
I think the max.
So you have to say that. So if you had two, seven through twelve graders, you're maxed out at a hundred, and if you're not a kid or two in the elementary, then you're not. Just asking, max of five per family for all devices, all ages, all of it. Okay. Do you have that, Shannon?
Twenty-five dollars for the three through six iPad, fifty dollars for seven through twelve laptops with the. We are going to retain the one hundred dollars max per family.
All right, is there any, oh, is there a second? Heimbuck seconds, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Staffing, the first one is coaching resignations, background was in Mrs. Song's memo. So we do have. A resignation letter from both Mr. Cragian as C squad girls' basketball coach. And Robin Paul as, no, she was C squad girl basketball coach, and Mr. Cragian as assistant boys' coach. Is there a motion to approve those two resignations? Nagel moves to approve the two resignations, is there a second? Day second, is there any discussion?
My question would be, the C squad position wasn't added. And we no longer have that situation now.
Right.
Robin and I talked about this already, and so she'll be at the board meeting next month, and she'll be bringing forward some numbers, so that's why we didn't bring the C squad coaching. To you quite yet, because she'll have more numbers for you, for the girl, because I. to you quite yet, because she'll have more numbers for you, for the um girl, because I, I believe they are looking at like thirty girls. Judy just had camp, so. They've got quite a few girls. But she's going to bring those numbers to you with.
So we're not, we're just doing resignations, we're not doing.
Right, and we don't have to, um, we don't have to act on the chance being the C squad coach till later, but Robin will bring.
Just acting on the resignation number, yes, good, good point. Is there any further discussion on the resignations? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes and the resignations are accepted. We added item two, drivers' education instructor pay. Okay, so just a little history on this, um, twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, we see thirty dollars. And twenty eighteen, it went up to thirty-one, and we increased it to twenty nineteen, thirty-two. And that's per hour. So I would like to see this increased. About fifty. Okay, was that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Nagel moves to approve, uh, increase driver education instructor pay to thirty-three dollars and fifty cents per hour, is this a second? I'm but seconds. How many teachers do we have? Vicki and Tom? Vicki does the classroom and the driving and driving, and one just goes, right, okay, is.
Yes, when is that effective? For next year?
Next year, yes.
Okay.
Yes, are they done for this year? They're still doing something.
For twenty twenty-three, okay, okay.
So the next cohort of rates, not, not.
Summer of twenty twenty-three, yep, okay.
It just seems to be that's one we always forget about, only talk about in. Add it someplace, you know, you know.
Needs to be on the annual meeting. Okay, uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, motion passes. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three calendar change. The calendar was in your packet and the explanation was in Mrs. Sal's memo. We're just correcting an error, do you want to?
Yeah, well, it, we, we caught it last year at the end of the year, but with the changeover in leadership, um Brennan brought it to me, and then I remember, actually, uh, but that there was just a miscount of days, and Mr. Getz said he thought maybe it had been a day where it was supposed to be vacation, he just forgot to add it back in, but we just thought it would be easier just to add it on to Christmas vacation there.
So the calendar that we have in front of us in our packet has December twenty-second, Thursday the twenty-second as a vacation, with the calendar that we previously approved added as a school.
School day, yes.
But um that gave us one more instructional day than we needed, or one less vacation day than we stated.
And it weighs more with the contract, you know, the, the teaching contract. Contact me days and that, so.
Okay. Right, is there a motion to approve the change of this twenty-two, twenty-three calendar? I'll make a motion. I'm but moves to approve the proposed change in the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, is there a second? I, I may go seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Right, business manager training.
Um, so I would like to request um to attend the business manager training um that is tentatively scheduled to start on Aug- at the end of August, and it's twenty-eighth. And it's uh part of it is at home or online, some of it is done in person, um, but in order to complete the business manager's uh training.
Okay, so are you, it's two, this, is the software unlimited, is that that's separate from business?
That is separate, the software unlimited is just the program that we use, and there is a training in BizMark at the end of September, that one does not that doesn't cost any other than buying travel or anything. But the business manager, I cannot enroll until um I have board minutes sitting that I could enroll.
Okay, and so the fees for the business manager certification, if I remember right, total over the two or three year period is around twenty-five, twenty-eight?
I think it's twenty-six hundred for all the courses that you take, and then you have, it's a two-year course, you have up to five years to complete it. But you pay per course, not, you don't just pay the full twenty-six hundred, you pay as you take your courses.
Okay, um, I I would like us to pay for this, and I would like to consider whether we should have a uh tuition, something like the tuition agreement that we have with the, with the teachers that have taken the T L A. So that we pay, but if Shannon leaves us before a certain time, that we, when we cover some of that. Not a lot. Does that seem to be something?
Yeah, we tried not.
So it, so because it's not it's not fixed tuition, like you said, you get five years to take those, look different modules. Can we, can we approve your enrollment in the business manager certification program for the minutes so that you can get involved, and then how um how the two of you come back with a proposed promissory note or whatever it was, sort of like we have for the issue?
Yeah, that's.
You probably just copy that document.
Yeah, very similar.
It would be, be the same, just sort of a percentage issue. And it could just be based on the, on the amount that has been paid so far.
Yeah. And so if I remember right, the district pays for, for the teachers, the district pays on tuition. The teacher pays nothing. But if the teacher leaves, then teacher reimburses. Is that the way we?
No, twenty-five percent.
No, there was a share that the teacher.
They paid twenty-five percent of it, school paid seventy-five percent of it.
Well, I'm not sure, given that this is a total of twenty-five hundred dollars, I, I, I'm not sure we need to pay any of that, but I think we should act today to approve her enrollment and then have her come back next time with a a reimbursement fee that's modeled after the, the T L. She's required to have it, though.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, no, but it's, it's recommended and helpful, not just, not just for the skills, but I think for the networking and getting to know other business managers and who, who, who can I talk to? It is not required by, or by the district. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve uh Shannon Jepsen enrolling in the business manager certification. I would, I just about called you Shannon there. I, I haven't told her she will may or never.
That's nice.
They move to approve of Shannon Jepsen enrolling in the business manager certification program, is there a second? Second, I'm like seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. And I do think that the district should pay the expenses, obviously, but uh for, for any travel, um but um the software unlimited, you said there is no charge that we, 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 we pay for the support and training with our.
Yeah, I, I'm, that one is just the, because it's three days, it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's obviously been their drive to this mark, and starts at eight to three for three days. Again, September, yeah.
Okay, well, I think it's, it's important that you do. Okay. We've completed then the action items that are listed, okay? Uh, reports, the food director report activities and technology and superintendent reports were in your packet. Any questions, comments, things that you would like more information about? Girls' golf practice is almost ready to start.
Yes, okay, so uh we went through on the lawyers, and then the lawyer contacted Kevin and um August first was the deadline. He wanted halfway, ten days before school, and I told the lawyer, no, we want it done by August first, and he said he would. He has been here at least once, not twice, and so Dave's been giving me updates, so Dave expects.
There's that.
Well, they'll, they'll check that, yeah.
See, Mr. Engel's report was quite detailed, we had a lot of foreign languages and everything jammed up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I did highlight something in his report, um talks, uh, his reference to the doorbell and video access to the east lobby. He indicates this was approved in May, and we, and we've already ordered the equipment and it's not here yet. We did approve that in May, I remember talking about it, but.
The building committee did approve that, it was like.
Oh, okay.
In the meeting that we had.
Okay, so the board didn't approve.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, during the, I mean, uh, Mr. Guest brought it to the buildings committee. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we don't have to take part together, right?
Well, I remember, maybe it was already. Okay, any other questions on or comments on the food director, activities director, or technology director's reports?
Um, just in uh superintendent's report on the dishwasher, um do we want to consider students, whatever else in school, students?
I also noticed in the handbook that there's work in retention.
Okay, I think that this was kind of um talked about last time, that it could be a possibility, but Jared said that there are the safety issues too, but we have had students working there before, but she does have a couple of apps, I thought asked into that dishwasher job, and she said she's got some people on the line, so.
If needed.
Yeah. 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 You know, and last year we did have um specialized students. It's a disruption first too, so they must work past some of those requirements, so.
All right, uh, we don't accept the reports, I guess, or, yes, we do accept the reports, sorry. Um, any other questions, do you want to, is, is the Cheyenne Valley Special Ed, is that part of your superintendent?
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Pretty significant, I think you should probably.
Yes, it is, so um in your packet I have some things, but uh some reasons why, okay, so there were less grants that are coming in, she rolled over some federal grants, but there's fewer of those grants, everything's just getting a lot tighter. Um, student contracts, when kids are sent out to different places, you know, you often get student contracts, she had less of that than in the past. Same thing with state responsible staff salaries, they ended up, you know, last year, in order to make um more appealing, I don't know if that's it, so we, in order to hire people, they ended up having to give um a single health insurance policy to the pair professionals, so that increased the cost of, um, you know, our staff benefits in that too. Uh, the virtual learning academy that we had in place, that ended up costing a little bit more than the vehicle fuel and maintenance, just like everything else. And it, you know, I mean, it's pretty shocking that hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's even above our overage, but the services that we get from the special ed unit, we ended up paying out like, I have that down here, like seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for, isn't that crazy, right? We, our, our special ed services were seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, almost seven hundred and fifty-five, and the dollars that we paid to S B S U are pretty close, seven seventy, but um I had a question about like why we're in special ed units, which is a really good question, you know? There's no possible way that our rural schools would be able to provide the services that um we need to provide, so just for our um teachers and pairs here in Oaks, that's how much our staff services were worth, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That's just our pairs and our teachers and all. And that doesn't include, so then from the unit, you know, we get um our vision teachers, our school sites, um, we get O T P T, that's our social uh services, so, you know, those are services that we get from them, like, I mean, it's almost like a insurance policy, you know, you belong to the special ed unit because you might need services that you can't possibly provide. And so in my research found out from Tom that it was in the early nineteen eighties when they started doing special ed um units. And every school belongs to a special ed unit because you just really, except for probably Fargo and those big schools, they, they gone, but, you know, even valleys in our special ed unit, so. Um, but you said at one time you had to send a child off somewhere for.
We had high cost in the late seventies, early eighties, we had high cost student. Um, it was costing them to just connect us to a hundred thousand dollars, then educate that student. So when, if we were to belong to, and then we joined the unit, now all of a sudden the whole unit is sharing that cost of that hundred thousand dollars student. Now would be three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars, you end up with a student at uh Ann Carlson. Very expensive, and if you're not going along with a unit, you're going to be, you pay a cost. So it helps me.
Yeah, and for those services that we couldn't hire for, you know, that.
Yeah.
You know, we wouldn't be able to give social services person down here, but we still get our school site, but we still get those services because of the. So it's a pretty precious thing to have, and it's just an unavoidable expense, and I mean, it's just something that we're seeing cost everything, you know? Right, so um we um have our, we haven't filled one of the positions, and Tracy's kind of got a plan, we're looking for long-term stuff. We had one of our special ed teachers resign, um, and just a couple weeks ago, and the special ed unit denied it. So and that's like the first time that they had to deny, but in, in days, in hiring environment, you know? There's not like four teachers waiting for every job, there's nobody to take that contract, yes, yes. So that, that's like, if boards don't like to do that, I mean, you guys don't, if somebody doesn't want to be, you know, it's really hard to provide the services for the kids, and that was what the board members, that was their focus, was to provide for our kids. But we are still looking for a special, but there are some plans, you know, in place, and Tracy's been kind of working great in myself, and we're trying to figure out how to, you know, provide the service. Tracy's an outstanding director, she just is, and you know, and she does her very best to treat her people right and to provide the services that she needs, so she's got a lot of tricks up her sleeve, so.
Is there? I guess I want to talk about uh the, the agenda for the retreat, but I, as long as we're on special ed, I'm wondering, would, would Tracy come and speak to us, would anybody have an opportunity to spend half an hour at a retreat, or even if she tried to spike the room? Yes, she said she would. Because this is a pretty significant change, and I'm not saying it isn't justified, I'm confident it is justified based on um what, what we're seeing here, but there's just so many pieces that, like, like, so many people think, well, you know, Denise, I wonder where it's in our building, so she works for Oak's Public Schools, well, no, she doesn't, she works for Cheyenne, well, it's been a lot for our students, just like now our, there's a council that works for tech center, even though it'd be largely, have been largely in the building. I, I'm wondering if, if, if that's a topic that we want to have some discussion on at our retreat. And we will have a deep dive in the budget, and that's a pretty big. And we will have a deep dive in the budget, and that's a pretty big part of the budget. Big impact. So, so not to get ahead, but any other questions regarding the superintendent's reports?
Yeah, just the problem, I mean, what that, all we did was twenty five hundred dollars, you know, nothing, all this twenty five hundred dollars for. I said that's, we, we didn't act on that.
We had some other options for that, but I figured, okay, you guys can correct me, because I don't know, I figured that was the deal with Philly. A little less expensive option, but it's not safe during the winter, so we've got to do something, we've got to figure out, but I just figured that would. Is that right?
Okay, anything else on the administrative reports? If not, is there a motion to approve them? I'll make a motion. Nagel moves to approve the, or accept, is it better to accept?
I think accept.
Is that what you want?
Yes, they said, so it's that, the administrative reports.
Is there a second? I'm but second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. That gets us to the future meeting dates. Do you have our board retreats? Oh, Bill, we didn't add Bill to the agenda, can we do that now?
No.
No.
No. The Bill, we're laying here at our. These are for twenty twenty, the coming school, you're not. I'm just going to, as chairman, take the initiative to, for the good of the order, there we go, I always ask for the good of the order. For the good of the order.
Oh, yeah. The travel check, well, you want to approve them, you can have them, but.
Is there a motion to approve the bill, which has been presented? I'm but moves to approve the bill, is there a second? Second. Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, the, this, the no sparkle vendors. Then some necessary equipment.
That was the equipment, sleep payment.
For the computers. We bought them on a, on a lease plan. So what is it, like sixty eight?
I think that's our last payment, right?
I think, I think it's the last payment. It was like a three or four year.
Any other question, or discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say ayes. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Any other topics that you would like to discuss at the board retreat, budgets? Cheyenne Valley Special Ed Services and. I would like to have a discussion about the, the school board training, which you heard about, we discussed this last, I think, November, and we decided not to go ahead with it. And I'm, I'm just starting to hear about it again, and it sounds like districts signed up for it, enrolled in it back then, but now they're getting it completed, and some, like Ellendale and Sergeant Central evidently just completed them, and they, they went together, so you can, you can reduce your cost by joining another district. I had spoken to Joe Palos, the Department of Public Instruction, and he, I said, well, I was thinking of going together with Ellendale or Sergeant Central, and they're already done. So he suggested maybe with, or he thinks that they are districts that most of them may have expressed an interest. Both are partners with us in the career tech center, which would be a synergy. The other thing on that too is that there's two day training, and like the coaching that follows, we don't necessarily have to do the coaching that follows. That can be your choice after completing the training. I know that was useful with everybody, like, or whatever. And is that additional expenditure?
I'm not sure, and I know that they, that, that the, the E P I was using their answer. What they, they reserve ten percent of that back.
I'm told another round of enrolling or grant application will be forthcoming in September. So I'll, I'll try to get more information, look at, at the.
Strategic plan and public monitoring.
Yes. That was, that's something, would, something, anything administration wants to bring to us. Not, not every item has to be a one hour. So I've got budget, special ed, board training, strategic plan, and lead policy.
The standards.
Standards based grading. So if that's a topic you want to communicate with Anna specifically, what, what you want to do or need. Okay, other than that then, so we have the board retreat scheduled for August third, which is a week from tomorrow. And we have it set at six o'clock. Are you available, Tom? And who all do we want there? Just Anna, your staff, and members of the unit? Your staff. Print poles or, so Anna, the board, and our business manager team. Yeah, the people will help there. And we'll have it right here. Next regular meeting would be Tuesday, August the ninth at seven AM here. You available then, Tom? I mean, I hope, there will come a time when we're not going to need you on.
Yeah, I am available.
And then September would be September the thirteenth. Yeah. Anything else for the good of the order?
Both of those are more.
Yes. Retreat this evening, regular meetings, Tuesday, Saturday. If there's nothing else, thank you everyone for your diligent work here, two hours and twenty minutes, not too bad, for then you extended that. Hi, Gary. All right, and thank you, I will declare the meeting adjourned at eight nineteen.